Okay, can you hear me? There we go. All right, I'd like to call the meeting to order. This meeting is being held in the council chambers and is open for the public attendance and participation. Can I have a roll call, please?
Chairperson Zilman.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Brookman.
Here.
Commissioner Noor.
Here.
Commissioner Sandu.
Here.
Commissioner Gill.
Here.
Commissioner Dale. Commissioner Campbell.
Present.
Okay, let's do the pledge of allegiance. And Commissioner Noor, will you lead that for us?
All right. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
That's okay. Okay, you are welcomed and encouraged to participate in this meeting. Public comment on items not listed on the agenda will be heard at this time. Comments on controversial items may be limited, and large groups are encouraged to select a representative to express the opinions of the group. Members of the public submitting their written requests at least 24 hours prior to the meeting will be normally allowed five minutes to speak. Do we have any comments from the public on any items not on the agenda? Okay. Okay. Okay, so we're going to go into agenda modifications. Planning Commissioners, is there any interest in modifying the agenda?
No.
Okay. So, let's go up. Can I get a first? Make a motion? Conduct a vote to approve the agenda?
Yeah.
Motion to approve the minutes.
I'm sorry.
I'll second that.
All right, we have a first and a second?
All in.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Approval of minutes, minutes from February 28th, 2024, and March 13th, 2024. Commissioners, is there any interest in modifying the minutes?
No, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from February 28th and March 13th, as is.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, let's get to some business items. Tentative subdivision map, TSM 23-03 Gorsi subdivision, located on 1112 El Margarita Road, subdivising 2.28 acres into five single-family residential lots on a private street. And we have Associate Planner Jaspreet Kar here too can tell us all about it.
Great, good evening, Planning Commissioners and members of the audience. Today, we have tentative subdivision map 2303 for the Gorsi subdivision. So, the project, as Chairwoman Zilman just described, so it is to subdivide a 2.28 acres into five parcels located at 1112 El Margarita Road. It is zoned R1, and it comes out to about 2.2 dwelling units per acre. So, for the first one, compatibility with neighboring uses, so it's surrounded by neighborhoods, as shown here, and then we do have a new subdivision just to the south of the property, Henson Ranch, so that's additional homes in the neighborhood, and what they're proposing to do is subdivide the parcel. So, there is an existing home on the parcel, which will remain, and so this is the parcel itself, and you'll see what they're proposing to do is where the current driveway is, that will be the road leading to the subdivision. And here is just one from the other side. Part of are the conditions that are proposed is they will be required to do improvements. So, that does include sidewalk curb and gutter in front of this, which is parcel five, and we are also requesting improvements to be made in front of the parcel, just to the south, for connectivity. So, the sidewalk will connect you from the new private development down Chirai Highway in front of parcel five to the existing home on the south that is not a part of the project to Henson Ranch. So unfortunately, there won't be any development to the north because it's not part of the project, but as planning, we thought it would be a good idea to have the connectivity instead of it not being in front of that one existing home. So, for the analysis, access into the development is going to be from El Margarita Road, and again, it is proposed to be a private paved road. It will be maintained at the applicant's option, so either through a maintenance agreement, a homeowners association, or a different city-approved mechanism, and that is reflected in the conditions of approval. Services, city water and wastewater will be extended, as well as the stormwater drainage. So, for the environmental, staff did perform a preliminary review, and we determined that it falls under categorical exemption set forth in CEQA guidelines, section 15, 332, under infill development, and so items A through E were the findings that are required for it to be exempt. In our municipal code, we also have findings that are required, listed one through eight, and this was provided in the staff report with the supporting documentation. Happy to run through that if you would like, but they are listed on the screen for you. So, our recommendation tonight is to conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings to adopt a resolution determining that the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15, 332, infill development, and approve tentative subdivision map 2303, subject to the conditions of approval, creating five single-family residential lots on approximately 2.28 acres located at 1112 El Margarita Road, with the assessors parcel listed on the screen. We also have the applicant, Anthony Hewitt, here, if you would like to have him answer any questions, and staff is available as well. Thank you.
All right. Are there any questions from staff? To... No questions? Where's Mr. Hewitt? I just want to make sure he's here. Oh, there you are, okay. All right, so if you didn't have any questions, okay. I'm going to go ahead and open it for a public hearing. Is there anyone that would like to speak on this? Anybody in opposing this? No? Okay, well, I'm going to close the public hearing. I'm going to ask the Commissioners, are you ready to make a motion? Anyone? Okay. Who's going for that? Stacy? A long one.
Yes. Make a motion to pass resolution of Planning Commission of City of Uba City approving tentative subdivision map, TSM 23-03 Gorsi subdivision, subject to the conditions of approval, and determine the project is categorically exempt from environmental review pursuant to CEQA guidelines, section 15, 332, infill development, located at 1112 El Margarita Road, assessors' parcel number 62-082-004 and 012.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote, please. Commissioner Campbell?
Aye.
Commissioner Gill?
Aye.
Commissioner Sandu?
Aye.
Commissioner Noor?
Aye.
Vice Chairperson Brookman?
Aye.
Chairperson Zilman? Yes. All right. Thank you, Mr. Hewitt. Thanks for coming. All right, we're going to go on to item number six, consideration of use permit 2203 to allow the expansion of the existing Sikh temple at 1298 South George Washington Boulevard. And again, presentation by Associate Planner Jaspreet Kar.
All right, so now we have a use permit 2203 for the Sikh temple. So, the project proposal tonight is going to consist of a 4,000-square-foot assembly hall. The existing temple will be converted to a priest residence. There will be a proposed kitchen and prep area and paved parking for 46 vehicles, and there will be two accessible parking spots. The hours of operation proposed is going to be 5:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. daily. So, a little bit of background, Sutter County approved a use permit in 2002 to build a Sikh temple. However, that permit was put on hold and it had expired. So, that use permit was to allow for a greater expansion. So, currently, there is a single-family residence there that is being used as the Sikh temple, and it was annexed into Uba City in 2022 and was part of the Lincoln East specific plan, and so the Lincoln East specific plan was rescinded, but the land use is going to remain the same. So, public facilities designation does not specifically list religious facilities as a permitted use, but under the section in the municipal code, public uses not listed are allowed by a conditional use permit, so that's why we are here tonight. So, the project site, again, at 1298 South George Washington Boulevard, so this is currently approximately 28 acres, and the highlighted portion is pretty much where they are planning to do the development. And on the right side of the screen, we do have the layout, so you can see that there is the proposed... So, we have our proposed assembly hall, so this is going to be 4,000 square feet. The existing temple currently is going to become the priest residence. There is going to be the proposed kitchen, and there's an existing barn that they will keep on site, and here we have the parking spots that is what's required by our code. And here is a current picture of the temple. So, compatibility with neighboring uses, so it's currently surrounded by orchards, agricultural uses, so it has been planned for urban growth since the 1980s, but as a small religious facility, we expect that impacts are going to be very minimal. City services, because it was recently annexed, they're currently just not available, so the site is going to utilize a private onsite well and a septic system, as well as onsite drainage. So, the traffic, so it's going to be accessed from South George Washington, and that is designated to become a four-lane major arterial. A portion of the property will be dedicated for the necessary right-of-way, and the project will build one half of the street improvements along the frontage of their parcel. There is also an unnamed collector road, so in the Lincoln East specific plan, just to the north of this property, there is a future road that would potentially connect from Cherry Street to Township Road, and we are requesting that to be dedicated as well. So, here you can see the Lincoln East specific plan, so we do have it highlighted right here. So, this is our site, so you can see it does run just east and west. So, the design review, so again, they are proposing a new 4,000-square-foot assembly hall, and what they are proposing is for there to be, it's going to match what's existing there, so similar characteristics with the brick veneer, so on, as you can see, the west and north side, they do have that incorporated to have a little bit of similarity between what's existing and the new assembly hall. And this is currently what's existing, so this is now going to be the priest residence with the proposed kitchen, and then the barn will be just on the backside. And here is just a layout of the landscaping, so there will be landscaping that will be required with the development. And here we have rendering, so this was provided by the applicant, just to show more of a visual of what they are proposing for the site to be developed as. And one thing also to know, on their site plan, they did have a 50-foot flagpole listed, but currently in our code, it only permits a 25-foot flagpole, so that is something that's on our list to change in the future, to have some sort of either a use permit or, you know, depending on the use of the site, if a flagpole can go higher than the 25 foot. So, at this time, the flagpole is not a part of the approval of the use permit, they will be required to meet what's in the ordinance. And so, at the time of development, or when they do put the flagpole in, if our code allows for it to go higher, they are more than welcome to do so. So, environmental, there was an environmental completed, and after doing that, we did come to a conclusion that the use permit 2203 will not create any significant impacts, and there are proposed mitigations that are included with the conditions of approval. So, use permit findings, they are presented on the screen here, so it states that the approval of a use permit shall only be granted when the following findings can be made, and which, again, in your staff report, it was presented. I do have a couple revisions here, so condition of approval number three, I forgot to put the month in, so really just requesting to change that to dated April 2024. And condition of approval number seven, we are just changing, highlighted in red, with the 23-foot PSC behind the right-of-way line, and that is to match condition of approval number nine, so the road widths are exactly the same. So, our recommendation tonight is on the screen, and so to conduct a public hearing and make the necessary findings, and to adopt a resolution with the revised conditions of approval, number three and seven, of the Planning Commission of Uba City approving environmental assessment, 2217, by adopting a mitigated negative declaration, subject to the proposed conditions of approval and mitigation measures, and approve use permit 2203 for a 4,000-square-foot religious facility, food preparation kitchen area, priest resident, and associate parking and landscaping on a 1.8-acre portion of a larger 28.87-acre parcel at 1298 South George Washington Boulevard. We also do have our applicant and representative here, if we would like to open it up, and if Commissioners, if you have any questions, we're happy to answer them for you.
Okay. Are there any questions from staff so far? Anybody?
I do.
Okay.
Yeah. Question regarding the staff report. Staff report states that the general plan amendment and zoning is interpreted to be public use, so if it's by stating that it's interpreted to be, there must be some ambiguity on what the actual land use designation zoning is. Could you clarify that for me?
Sure, so the Lincoln East specific plan had this as quasi-public, but that zoning does not, or the general plan designation does not exist in our general plan, so therefore it is a public facility.
Thank you for clarifying.
It's the best use.
Appreciate it. And then, final question, the kitchen, is that going to be in addition to the existing residence that's going to be used as the priest's home?
I believe so. It's going to be an addition, yes.
So, it'll be in addition to?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Did you have anything? Okay, go ahead.
Hi, Jaspreet. I just wanted to know, as the community builds out, do we have pedestrian-friendly options that are going to be included in this?
So, currently, it's only going to be the improvements along the parcel, so we have the sidewalk curb and gutter. There is no development to the north or south currently proposed, so we can't put that on the current applicant.
Do we have a timeline for this? You saying, like, when we think that the development on this was going to start, did you say?
I might pass that over to Tony to see when they would be able to start that.
How long is the conditional use permit valid for? Because if I recall correctly, there's a certain timeframe in which you have to at least meet certain conditions.
Correct, so for two years, and they are able to come back within the 30 days of the expiration date for an extension.
Okay. I heard you say about Cherry Street. Of course, that opened up my ears. Talk to me about that, and when are you talking, and how is that, this growth going to occur?
I was like, where's Ben? Ben might be able to help me with this one.
So, high level, the Lincoln East specific plan, those land uses are set, and so, and there are some of these roads have been designated and set in our traffic model to be collectors. And so, we don't know when that development's going to occur between George Washington and the east, but we want to make sure we don't miss the opportunity to acquire the right-of-way for the road. And so, the way staff has handled it and the condition, we've required an irrevocable offer of dedication. So, basically, they need to offer it to the city, and it remains theirs, but it sits on it maybe for years to come, but when that road comes, and we're requiring half, so it's not the full burden of the road width, but it'd be half that road width. And then, when the development occurs to the north, they will also have to dedicate their south portion because it's a general plan roadway. And so, we're not requiring it to be built to nowhere at this time, but we want the dedication for the right-of-way, so we don't get into a problem where a building gets built in the wrong location, or it's hard to acquire it later. And so, one of the conditions of approval, it talks about this irrevocable offer, and that is for that road to ultimately connect through.
So, with the temple being built, they'll probably end up going down just south, just going, you know, back and forth on this, to George Washington.
Correct.
Not like, or Lincoln, or
Yes.
Roads that are already existing. So, we're thinking 10, maybe 10 years from now or something, because I'm, yeah, because a lot of people are starting to get beat up over that, you know? There's so much, and nothing to do with this project, but there's just so much traffic on that site again, so. But 46 more additional is not the challenge, so, okay, perfect.
Yeah, this does, we hope that this does not hurt Cherry Street.
Right.
But it's not improving Cherry Street at this time. It does grab that right-of-way for the future.
Right.
But it's not the answer for Cherry Street at the moment.
At the moment, all right. Okay, all right, well, that helps. Okay, there's no more questions? I'm going to open it up for a public comment. Is there anyone that is here against the project? Let's go there first. Doesn't look like it? I'm sorry, go ahead. So, anyone here for the project? And state your name, please, and your address. There's a little button at the bottom.
Yes.
There you go.
Good evening, Commissioner, this is Sukjit Tony Singh, 250 West Main Street Woodland, representing the applicant, Gurunanik Sikh Temple, Uba City. So, we are really thankful to the county, city staff, planning staff especially, who work with us diligently, and today, we are waiting for this day and bringing this project here. So, in regards to few clarifications of the Commissioners, Commissioner Campbell asked question about the kitchen. So, the existing single-family residence have a about 970-square-feet kitchen, garage, so that will be converted into the commercial kitchen.
Thank you.
And in regards to question by Commissioner Sandu about the construction timeline, so the assembly hall building is going to be, the mainframe is going to be a basically prefabricated metal building, so that is already supplied on the site, so as soon as we get the building permits, so we will be breaking the ground. And in regards to improvements of the George Washington Boulevard, so staff gave us two options, either to build it or sign a deferred frontage improvements agreement, so probably we'll be going for the later. So, whenever it is developed in future, so we'll be paying the fair share of the development. So, if Commissioner has any other questions, so I'm here to answer, and thank you so much for giving us the opportunity.
Thank you. Okay. Anything else? I think we're good. All right, if anybody else doesn't want to, oh, you want to speak? Go ahead. Please state your name and your address, please. I'm not sure everybody knows who we are.
Carn Baines, 2275 Lincoln Road. Honorable Members of the Planning Commission, distinguished guests, and fellow residents, I stand before you today not only as a Sutter County Supervisor, in whose district this gurdwara exists, but also as a neighbor. Proud to support the Sikh temple's application for the new building. We are neighbors on both north and south sides of the property. I've had the privilege of witnessing firsthand the positive impact the Sikh temple has had in our community. The Sikh temple is not just a place of worship, but it's a beacon of unity, compassion, and service. Its members have constantly demonstrated their commitment to serving the needs of our community, regardless of race, religion, or background. From organizing food drives to offering shelter to those in need, the Sikh temple embodies the spirit of neighborly love and solidarity. As a neighbor, I can attest to the fact that the Sikh temple has been a responsible steward of its current property, maintaining it with care and respect. I've seen firsthand, the temple has worked tirelessly to ensure that its activities are conducted in harmony with the surrounding environment and community. The proposed new building will not only enhance the capacity of the Sikh temple to serve its members, but it will also enable it to expand its outreach programs and community service. With a larger space, the temple will be better equipped to host cultural events, educational seminars, and social gatherings that promote understanding, dialogue, and cooperation among all members of our diverse community. Furthermore, the construction of this new building will create jobs, stimulate economic growth, and contribute to the overall development of our area. It will serve as a testament to our community's commitment to diversity, inclusivity, and religious freedom. In conclusion, I urge the Planning Commission to support the Sikh temple's application for a new building. By doing so, you will not only be affirming our commitment to religious liberty and cultural diversity, but also to investing in a brighter, more inclusive future for all residents of Uba City and Sutter County. Thank you for your attention and consideration.
All right, very good. Is there anybody else that wanted to speak? Okay.
Good evening, my name is Devinderjit Singh. My address is 1741 Rio Vista Way, Uba City. Before I speak, I wanted to, you know, get your approval if I could use our religious greeting.
Sure.
Okay, thank you. So, basically, Waigurji ka kalsaa, Waigurji ki fathay. The meaning of the greeting, the Waiguru is the name of the god, and the kalsaa means the practicing Sikh, and the fathay means the greeting and the victory, so when we greet each other, we remember God at all times. Another greeting that we use is Sat Shiri Akal, meaning God is true, God is the ultimate truth. I just wanted to, you know, explain the meaning behind the greeting, and then, now, basically, I love God, and God is present in each and every one of us, and I love you all. I have found this love for God from the teachings of our guru. Our guru is the holy grant, the holy book, Guru Granth Sahibji. In this world, when the evil mind sometimes take over and the negativity takes over, everyone needs a place to worship and get our mind right and find that inner peace, that compassion, that love for God, and for me, that is at the Sikh temple. I have seen people struggling in life, going through hard times, come to the gurdwara. The gurdwara has become a beacon, a light, a hope for a lot of people, and they find a lot of love and a supportive family that help you walk through the tough journey. It is a safe place to share their burdens, find comfort, and connect with God. Through prayer, worship, and fellowship, the community have experienced the transformative power of God's love and grace. They have found the strength in times of weakness, and peace in times of turmoil, and guidance when the times are uncertain. The support of the gurdwara has helped many with their doubts and fears. The community center prays together and helps connect the loving with the loving God and find hope in the midst of the hardship. I have come to support the building of the gurdwara, so that many others like me can find that inner peace, that love, that mindfulness, and share it with the community. And I just want to say thank you for giving me the time, the opportunity to speak, and if everybody agrees with me, please join me in doing a jakara. Bole so nihal. Thank you.
Thank you, that was beautiful. All right. Okay. Okay.
I'll keep it brief.
Okay.
Good evening, everyone, my name is Jatinder Kaur Joe Hall. I am a kindergarten teacher in our community, but I think my most important job is that I teach Sunday school. I taught Sunday school for 10 years at the Gurunanik Sikh Society Temple, the one we're here for, and I now teach here for, and I now teach Sunday School at a different location. And there are many reasons that we need a Sikh temple, another Sikh temple in Yuba City, but the reason that's nearest and dearest to me is Sunday School. Being first generation, I didn't have access to learning my language, how to read and write it, learning prayer, learning the culture, until I went to Sunday School. And I think with the growing population of first generation, second generation Sikhs in Yuba City, it's more important than ever to connect to the culture, to the language, and the religion. When I taught at the Sunday School for this temple, there was over 100 students, and there was not enough space. At the location I'm teaching now, there are over 150 students and not enough space. There is a year waiting list for that school. So with the growing population of Sikhs in Yuba City and the future generations, there just isn't enough Sunday Schools. I know of three, and that's, it's not enough. So I think that keeping kids connected to the culture, religion, not only teaches us that, but it also makes us good citizens, good, you're raising good neighbors, and you're raising good community members. So I think that is probably one of the most important reasons for me, and thank you for allowing me the time to speak.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
That's excellent, yeah. Okay, couple more, and...
All right, good evening, everyone. I'd like to gain Commission's approval to do our religious greeting.
Sure.
Waigurji ka kalsaa, Waigurji ki fathay. My name is Manveer Gaur, address is 3542 Rue Drive, Yuba City. I stand before you today as a proud member of the Sikh community, and I'm honored to speak in support of the gurdwara Sahibji, which has been a cornerstone of my life since childhood. I grew up here, what my values are today is because I went to school here, I attended various youth groups, youth camps, and today, I am thankful, I am proud to say that I serve as a principal for the Saturday Schools, the youth camps that take place at the gurdwara Sahibji. You know, growing up, this place was more than just a place of worship. It was my support system, a guiding light, from Saturday School to, you know, having youth camps every weekend, youth groups, right? I have spent countless hours within its walls, learning valuable lessons about compassion, kindness, and selfless service to others. And now, as I grow older, it's still the same, right? It still continues to be a source of comfort and strength for me. The doors are always open, I'm always welcomed there, and I know this applies to many of the youth which sits out here with me today. It's more than just a personal haven, right? It's a vital part of our community's fabric, which knits us all together. It provides a safe space for all people of all ages to come together, share their stories, and then support one another. It offers programs and services which help our community, which are valuable to our community, right, from food banks to youth groups, and so much more. By supporting this gurdwara Sahib, we're not just preserving a building, a historical building, rather, we're investing in the well-being of our community. We're ensuring that our future generations, the generations that have to come, have a place to grow, learn, and thrive as well. We're recognizing the value of faith, compassion, and selfless service. Therefore, I urge, I request the Commission to consider the impact this gurdwara Sahib has had on countless lives, right, including mine, and let us come together to support this institution. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are we, oh, got one, how about one more?
Yes, I'm the last one, I think.
Okay.
So...
Your name?
Yeah, my name is Amarpreet Singh Nijjar, and address is 1721 Rio Vista Way.
Thank you.
Yuba City. So dear members of the City Council, good evening. I stand before you not only as a healthcare professional deeply invested in the well-being of our community, but also as a representative voice for the vibrant Punjabi Sikh community of Yuba City. Also, as a parent dedicated to enriching the lives of children in this community, and for generations to come, I stand before you to advocate for the construction of new gurdwara building in southwest Yuba City. The gurdwara is more than a place of worship. It is a cornerstone of our community, offering spiritual guidance, education, and place of solace for anyone in need. It is also a gathering place for reflection and growth. Our gurdwaras have been pivotal in addressing community issues, including the fight against drug use. The teachings and programs provided in the gurdwara have shown a remarkable positive impact, reaching far beyond our own community. As a parent, I have witnessed the transformative effect these programs have on our youth in the form of spiritual and cultural education. My own children, who were once preoccupied with television and digital screens, now eagerly participate in weekend youth programs at the temple, for which the new building is being proposed. They are learning about their heritage, the Gurmukhi script, and valuable life lessons. This positive learning experience for our youth will guide them as they become strong, valuable future leaders of our community, and in the world beyond. Again, gurdwaras are more than just places of worship, they are vital community hubs. With three existing gurdwaras serving the north, south, and southeast Yuba City areas, there remains a quadrant, the southwest, that would greatly benefit from the proposed new gurdwara building. Just as we understand the need for multiple health service providers, such as four to five Walgreens stores spread across the Yubaseri counties, we recognize the need for accessible spiritual centers to serve our growing community. The proposed building will serve as a beacon of hope, unity, and support for the southwest region of Yuba City, and in fact, for all Yuba Sutter County residents. It will be a place for, where all faiths are welcome, to partake in events and programs that guide community members on the right path and connect them spiritually. In conclusion, I urge you, dear council members, to consider the profound impact this new gurdwara building will have on the well-being and unity of our community. Your approval will not only endorse the freedom of religious practice, but will also reinforce the values of diversity and inclusivity that make Yuba City a unique and harmonious place to live. So let us come together to strengthen the bonds of our community by approving the construction of the new gurdwara building. Your approval signifies more than just a building, it's a commitment to the well-being and harmony of our community. Thank you for giving me time and your consideration.
Thank you. That was great, okay, are we, okay, we're good, okay. All right, I'm going to close the public hearing. Okay, we're good. All right, so I'm going to bring this back to the Commission. We're ready for a vote? Any more questions?
I'd just like to say how excited I am to see a portion of our community come together as a part of that community in support of something that they believe in, that they're passionate about. One of the things that excites me, I have a huge spot in my heart for youth. I do leadership and work-ready courses at the high school to prepare our youth for what lies ahead. I'm involved in the foster program across the river in championing the advocates' rights of foster children. And so it's good to see the youth here getting some civic lessons, learning how to get involved and shape their future, so I applaud you for that. I encourage you to stay involved at all levels of the community and what happens at these types of setting, both at the Planning Commission and at the City Council and Board of Supervisors. So I just want to thank you for your time, your presentation, your passion, and with that, I'll pass it to one of my other commissioners.
Anybody else? Go ahead, yep.
Thanks Chairwoman Selman for letting us comment a little bit, but I just want to convey my appreciation tonight for this showing. You know, you've mentioned your pillars that are important, you have hope and unity, and I appreciate the background of overcrowded Sikh temples and schools, and it's a good problem to have, right? That you have that many people that want to be taught and want to be enriched, especially in a spiritual element, you know, a spiritual aspect of life. So I want to thank, I know some of these young ones, it might be close to bedtime, but...
Yes.
And I know, Chairwoman Selman likes to go to bed by seven, so this is rough.
Yeah, well, you know.
But in, you know, I don't know how fast this project will go, you know, of the City Council, and I imagine everything, if it goes through all the channels, but that day's going to be amazing, but I think this day will be incredible to remember this. And I've only been in this community about 10 years, like, I consider myself still new and still learning. I'll remember this forever, so I appreciate it.
It's good, all right. And for me, it's about the good neighbor, like, you know, of course Supervisor Baines lives right around the corner from me, and I call him all the time, "This traffic, gotta do something." And I appreciate that, somebody had made a comment about that. You are good neighbors, you're good neighbors on the north. I have a sister that lives right by the other temple, and you know what? There's never, yeah, one time a year, oh, it's all good, you know? And that's okay here, too, you can come block my street one time a year. So, you know, again, we're all good neighbors, so, you know, we appreciate that, and this has been amazing. Thank you for all the words, thank you for the prayers, it gave me goosebumps. So with that, let's go to a vote? Who would like to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we adopt a resolution of the Planning Commission, the City of Yuba City approving environmental assessment 22-17 by adopting a mitigated net of declaration subject to the amended conditions of approval number 3 and 7, as presented by staff, and the mitigation measures and approved use permit 22-03 for a 4,000-square-foot religious facility, food preparation and kitchen area, priest residence, and associated parking landscaping on a 1-point acre portion of a larger 28.87-acre parcel at 1298 South George Washington Boulevard.
Okay, can we get a second?
Second.
Okay. Uh, I, do we, we got a third? Go ahead, got a third. We got a third, and a fourth, and a fifth.
And we get a sixth, so.
Yeah.
Going one, going twice, going three times.
And do we need a roll call, or just, how about, all in favor? Aye. Any opposed? All right, motion passed. Congratulations.
Congratulations, thank you.
All right, we'd like to be invited. I don't know what they're doing, but you'll have to tell me.
Thank you. Thank you.
Well, we'll see you at groundbreaking. Little bit more to do, so, it's up to you. Going to give them a few minutes to go, okay. Yeah, you get out there. All right. That was great, no. Do we get to say bless you? Thank, thank you. Uh-oh, we need one for the city. Hold on, hold on, one for the city. Carm, get back, we got one more. Got to put this one on the city page.
When it came back, there was really no questions at all. That's good.
That's when you pretty much know. Hey, Ben, quick question. That's all the approval they needed to move forward, right? This doesn't go to the City Council?
Yes, with this being a use permit, it stops here.
That's what I thought, thank you, sir.
Now it's through staff as far as with the building permit.
Unless all the people who are in opposition, like, file an appeal, right?
With the caveat, if they choose the deferred improvement option for some of the road improvements, that will go to City Council.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Would that be for the sidewalk? Is that what they're referencing?
So...
Not that it was road.
If road improvements, so road improvements in a city standard development, it's road widening to the ultimate with curb gutter, a parkway strip with trees, and then you have the sidewalk, and then you have some streetlights. And so, it really, when we review the parcel, we'll have to look at it. I think what I was hoping to get was at least the curb and gutter, and to help with drainage improvements, and then how we do the landscaping or the sidewalk, we'll see how we defer, you know, because sometimes it's just the sidewalk to nowhere, there's a lineup, but at the same time, it was a good comment, because we receive a lot of people to walk to and from, and so that might be something that we want them to actually build.
I feel like, that's kind of like why I was wondering, because I live around the corner from Boe Road Sikh Temple, and I know that it's a big problem, is that we have a lot of community that wants to walk, and it's always an issue with the cars that are going by, so.
Yeah, I think that was a big deal to try to get some of the, it wasn't real impressive, but with Sandborne Road, we widened it a little bit just because of how much, how many people were walking and coming back and forth.
I wish we could do that little strip right there, though, going from the temple to Sandborne, on, off of Boe, like that.
Oh, sorry. That's right.
It might be coming soon.
Okay. I'm teasing you. All right, let's keep moving. I might get, might get us out of here by seven, okay. Do you guys know where I live? Cherry, Alpha Walton and Harding, that you can't get out anymore. I guess I just need to move. Okay, future agenda items, Mr. Moody?
So the first meeting in May is canceled.
Okay.
I believe that is May 7th.
Yeah.
Let me get my calendar up here.
No, or something like that, yeah.
So, excuse me, May 8th. So we're planning on the first meeting in May to be canceled. And then for the May 22nd meeting, we have two pending projects. I believe it's a use permit for a monument sign for Harder Marketplace, so in front of the pending raising canes there at the corner, south, I guess you would say, the northwest corner, southwest corner there of Highway 20 and Harder, they're proposing a 26-foot sign, monument sign, to basically be the main sign for that commercial area. And then we have, I just spaced it, oh, the senior center. So there's an assistant senior center proposed on East Onset Road next to the Red Cross Building. So it's, I believe it's a three-story building there, it's kind of an infill site, so that's what's proposed under a use permit for the 22nd.
What's your stance on that big sign out there?
I mean, at this moment, my understanding is staff is recommending it, approval of it, they, you know, we beat them up a little bit to make it look nice, but it's really, it's the anchor sign for that whole commercial area, so I think we're arguing that that's consistent, because instead of having little independent monument signs for each site, we consolidate it and have one nice sign up at the corner. And that's it, and so then you don't want to have poor visibility with multiple sites, signs on each parcel, and how it's set up commercially, so right now, the staff, I believe the staff report's being written in recommendation for approval.
How tall is the sign at the Yuba City Mall?
I'm sorry, you say it again?
How tall is the sign at the?
Oh, that guy's 80 feet? Is 60, is 60 to 80? 65?
Oh, it's tall, yeah.
Yeah, it's a biggie.
Okay, so there sounds great.
26 in relation is relatively, yeah.
I was just in Reno, and you know, the, all that growth that's out there, and the sign you're talking about, is if you didn't see that sign, I would have never known there was stuff to the... was stuff to the right of it, and so I understand exactly what they're asking for, it makes total sense.
What you're saying is, is the sign at the mall's taller than the flagpole we told the temple, no?
Yeah.
Can they get a variance on that?
On the, on the flagpole?
Do you really have to wait for a code revamp?
You know, this is an internal problem, really.
Basically, sir.
Yeah, I, I mean, no, I mean, what?
You always bring out something about the state.
Put your hands in the air and step away from the microphone.
So it's on the target list, so there's, there's always some quirks with the zoning code. When they did a zoning code update for the signs in 2017, they put in this requirement that, that said, no flagpoles over 25 foot, and since it's an ordinance, you can't get by it with a variance, you know, and, and so it's, it's really difficult to get by it or use permit around it, and so they need to update the zoning code just to allow that flexibility. And so it's just on the to-do list, it hasn't been updated, but the planning department is definitely working through a pending update, that hopefully isn't, hopefully it's not pending for another five years, but it's, it is something that we need to work on.
So if it's a sign with a flag on the top, you could do it.
All right, moving along.
Is Camping World?
I like that creativity.
In the county?
Camping World is in the county.
That's what I thought. Thank you, sir.
Okay. All right, Ben, do you have any Development Service Director, any more report, or anything to?
I have a, a few items, and then Ashley also had a couple things, and so, this is a little ways out, but Yubisity's coordinating a Yubisity cleanup day, so they had one last year, so in coordination with recology, Saylove, and the fairgrounds, we're playing for October 26th, so it's pretty much, and you'll see some social media stuff out that probably the month or so before, for anybody having any cleanup, it's a free dump day for Yubisity residents. Water Tower Park name, so there's the ad hoc committee formed by the city council to coordinate the name, the, the name for a park there underneath the water tower on Plymouth Street, so that's, that's in process, so we'll hear about a new park. Staff received a new tentative map, tentative subdivision map, Butte Vista East Estates, which is, if you remember Johnson Estates, basically, so East Onset by that detention pond, this would be the second phase of that to the south, and so there was two different property owners. Originally, we thought they were gonna go together, but then they didn't, but now the, the south property owner, is my understanding is in negotiation, so now they're submitting that, and so the push is to, to push that through, so it lines up with the construction and development of the north phase. And so, I think Cahov, I'm looking at Ashley as the developer that we've kind of been talking to a little bit, if I pronounced that right?
Cahov was looking at Johnson Ranch to the north, but I think they would do both.
That's who, with the south, I think, is trying to do both, so, and they're building some homes in Lincoln area right now. And then with that, Ashley had a few updates regarding some stuff she's working on.
I'm gonna stand. So we have a couple things coming up. First, an update on the city welcome sign back in...
Oh, yeah.
I don't remember when I was before you, but we talked about that. So an ad hoc committee was established, and three, not winners, three, what's the next word? Finalists were selected, thank you. Three finalists were selected, and on May 21st, the three finalists will be taken to city council for final selection. So a winner will be selected, so that's kind of exciting. And then we're also going to have a mayor's bus tour on May 20th. It hasn't been released yet to the public, but keep an eye on the city's social media page, it'll be first come, first served, and we're looking at having about 20 people able to fit on the bus, really. So that'll be exciting, we're gonna go see some developments that's currently happening in town. A lot of parks projects are going on right now, so we'll be looking at some parks projects as well. And then for businesses, so we're, we're partnering a lot with the small business development, I can't even remember what the C is, but SBDC.
C, yeah.
It's either council or corporation, or some, one of those C words. So we're, we're partnering with them and Yuba County, yes to Yuba, on office hours, so basically what that means is SBDC will have business advisors in Yubisity once a month, so the fourth Wednesday of the month, they'll be in Yubisity at city hall to meet with businesses. Basically, what they do is provide free consulting of how to develop a business model, how to develop financials for your business, et cetera, and then they'll be in Yuba County, so in Marysville, the second Wednesday of the month. So both are open to residents of Sutter or Yuba County, but it just provides two opportunities for those business owners. And then also with the SBDC, they are hosting a small business financial management course, it's like a crash course in May, so that's another good opportunity for small businesses, they can be new or existing, everyone wants to know how to, you know, better do their financials. So that's some exciting stuff we got going on.
I, I need to give you a compliment, that, I can't remember, I reached out to Ashley for a small business, a woman in small business, a cottage business that needed a stove of all things, but you know, a cottage business for a stove is $5,000 to $10,000. So I reached out to Ashley, and I said, oh, gosh, is there anything out there, what can you do? I know Yuba County was doing their, you know, business thing, and, you know, don't have any grants right now, but I'm telling you, Ashley just, within hours, got back to me, well, what about this, and what about that, and the SB, then you talked about that, and, and we were able to actually get her, you know, hooked up somehow, and so I, I just think that good customer service, you do so much more than what your job title is, is what I'm trying to say, and I think that's pretty special, so. She needs a raise, and I just want to throw that out there, so.
Great job to you two on your presentation.
Oh, my gosh.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Very nicely done.
This whole team is, is pretty amazing, right? Who do we need to tell?
You know, I, I've heard you loud and clear, and it'd be relayed.
I make a motion?
Yeah, make a motion, yeah. Do we have any power? No. Okay, move it on.
Two, two more things, if I interject, you reminded me, the city manager asked me, with our joint city council, planning commission, that we did a quick revenue measure, it was, it was a little bit quick, and so the city staff and the city team is gearing up, we're starting to go on the road a little bit, and so we're re-clubs and service clubs, and so the request is, if there is interest, the, the team is more than happy to come and present the full, you know, any questions or give that more time if there's interest from the planning commission. So let me know if you do, you don't have to at the moment. And then also, we are, we do have a new member joining the team that we believe will be here soon with the city staff, and it's, I'm gonna get it wrong, but Zitlali?
Zitlali.
Zitlali is a new planner, assistant planner that is joining our team, so you might see her at the next meeting, too.
Right. Neither woman, just say it. Oh, did I say that? Okay, Sutter County, anything?
Not much to report. The last hearing we had, I think the only thing of note, was a request for a use permit to open up a special event venue down on Markham Road and Mitchum, Mitchell Road, I think. Are you familiar with, were you there? I didn't, I wasn't trying to throw you under the bus, but I didn't, yeah, okay. Now, you know, great idea, great, great, you know, I've, I've been to tons of them, one of the things, I was on my phone during the thing, trying to look up the one down at the, the old Sugar Factory down in Clarksburg, which started off as a wedding venue, and now is a full-blown vendor center, and they have wine, winery show up, and it's just phenomenal. So the reason I bring that up was the immense amount of resistance there was from the local community to get that approved, and they had a representative talking about all the what-ifs, could-be, would-be, should-be's, and I think the only thing he left out was aliens landing and leaving crop circles, and the neighbors' ranches. But all that being said, it did pass four to one, and we got that approved. I'm sure there'll be an appeal based on the vehemence of the local residents, but I trust the board to, to follow suit and do the right thing. So other than that, no truck yards, we're good.
Okay, you're staying steady. So Ben, anything new on the Hinson Apartments? You know, I'm gonna stay, I'll stay on that, and Cherry, and Walton. That's the only two things.
You'll stay up for Hinson, Red Sox.
I'll stay, I will stay up on that, or Cherry and Walton. And, yeah.
So, so the current status with Hinson Apartments is that, on the city council side, at the, at the update, they recommended that ad hoc committee be formed for the traffic. And so at the next city council meeting, on May 7th, their staff is writing a staff report to, for council to establish an ad hoc committee. I believe the intent would be to have a couple council members, and then also individuals that are diverse across the region, so it's maybe not just people on Jefferson, or Royal Ranchero, that have their individual preferences. And that, I think, is to look at kind of like the ultimate goal for traffic calming or garden, or George Washington. That, that's the city council, I guess, the plan to look at traffic in that area, is trying to make a direction, is how to prioritize where they want to go with the traffic. Regarding Hinson Ranch Apartments, staff has, has had a meeting with the applicant, and that basically is at their discretion as to when they want to move that forward, and at this time, they're evaluating options and considering if, if and how they want to come forward to the city council.
Well, that's fair.
And so we haven't heard back at this time.
Okay. Walton?
Walton? Walton, I, I definitely looked at the design the other day. So, so they're getting close to a design, and I am hoping that I have a right turn southbound, and a designated left turn, and then, then ultimately laid out for a signal with some sort of merge lane in the middle, like a middle turn lane, so we fixed some of those problems. And we are partnering with the county on their road plan with the work, they're supposed to pave Harding Road this summer.
Oh, my goodness, that's, that's, you're my hero now.
Might go faster, but that's the plan.
Yeah, and then the home that, you know, hits right there on Cherry and, or, yeah, Cherry and Harding, are they gonna do, is, is it gonna be just this eyesore with all the yellow, and is that?
I personally haven't been out there for a while, but I know it's on the engineering's project list to basically replace that, that control system, and so they pretty much have to dig it up and put a new one in.
Yeah, it's pretty, yeah.
In order it. But if, if there's something, I could definitely have staff review it if it's starting to look a little messy.
Well, yeah, I don't know if you guys have different bias, it's, it's pretty sad, but I think that's it.
The drunk drivers, we need to, I don't know what the solution is.
Well, you can't fix stupid, so, sorry.
It's hard.
My dad, always said, I don't think he was talking to me, but I don't know.
We have a sign of, send that, or hurry that.
Anything else, Ben?
I think that's all.
Just breathe? Yeah? Ashley? Nothing? Okay, let's, we're out of here. Look at that.